I'd like to call the meeting order for June 22, 2022. We'll start with a pledge.
It's still set up from the election.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fun fact of the day, it is actually Maine state law that the American flag and state flag be so many feet from the entrance of the voting polls. That's why he gets moved. Just haven't made it back yet.
Although we diverted a major catastrophe right there because.
I know, I just haven't made it back to.
Okay, we're gonna go down to a election of chair.
Do we do a motion?
No, I think.
Yes, yes. Okay, I make a motion that we elect Tom to be our new chair.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? There we go. All right. Warrants and bills all been signed? Yes, great. Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting. Have they been reviewed?
They've been done.
They've been done.
I went through them. That was June 8th, the one you gave me.
Yes, we didn't have a meeting last week.
Okay, there was just one thing that needed to be fixed.
Yeah, I saw that blank.
All right, so I make a. Yep, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 8th.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Town administrators' weekly update.
All right, just a few things for you, because we've been very busy. First is a letter that we got from the Department of Secretary of State from Motor Vehicles, saying that effective June 13th, the Secretary of State Bureau of Motor Vehicles authorizes Jennifer Rue, employed by the municipality of Acton, to be, to process registrations, truck registrations level on a permanent basis. So when we originally applied, it was temporary. We were able to process the registrations for 60 days so that they could see how we were gauging the authority level. We are one of the very few of a handful in York County that do this now, so it's a, it's a, it's a big deal for Acton to have gained their permanent registration. Currently, Tom, because you're looking at me like.
Did you say this was for truck registrations?
Well, yeah, so let me elaborate on that. So currently, anybody that is a municipal agent can register a vehicle up to 12,000 pounds. These are heavy trucks. These are the, the big wheelers. Anything over 26,000 that needs DOT and proof of hub have to go to Motor Vehicles. They pay excise here and they have to go downtown. So this is a big truck, so this is a, a big deal for us to gain that level, so, yeah.
Great.
It's pretty convenient for guys like myself, instead of having to run down there, be able to do it right here.
Yep, it should be, should be handy. We are, until we continue to, because we're still learning it. It's a whole nother level of registrations. We're not going to allow people from other towns for now. That's one of the big things that, that we're already getting is, you know, they don't want to go to DMV. They want to come over here after they pay their excise, but for now, we're gonna turn them away until we are.
What sort of fee do we get on that?
It's just an agent fee. It's the same agent fee as you would a regular registration. We're really doing it just for convenience. We've got a lot of big trucks. I mean, we've got some businesses, you know what I mean? I mean, we've got Carl Hurd, God love him, he'll keep us employed just with his truck, so. People like that, we wanted to do it for.
Very good.
Just FYI, you'll see a couple of bills come in. We know that Teto, our computer IT person, is still out on medical. He does have a backup that's been covering his municipalities. Seacoast Computer, his name is Fred. We've had some backup failure issues and a couple of computer issues, so he's been in yesterday and today working on some things. He's also gonna return next Tuesday. They are doing away, the state is doing away with anything tied to Internet Explorer. So our Moses, which is our inland fisheries, our CVR, which is our central voter registration, it's a lot of things that have to be converted over and some of our computers aren't updated with the Windows 10, so you'll see him here on Tuesday.
So we're moving away from Internet Explorer?
We are not gonna use it at all with anything.
What are we using, Chrome or?
It depends on the program. I mean, regular Internet, they can use either Chrome or Mozilla, but some of them, like the Secretary of State's office, they have a very specific Edge. They want us to use Edge to access theirs. So he's gonna help us get it set up and, and do that.
Very good.
So that's Tuesday. Next Wednesday, the auditor will be here working, so certainly encourage you to stop in and say hello. We are working diligently to prepare for the end of year. We've gotten a lot of resources from Trio and from also the auditor and our new treasurer, something you guys will talk about a little later. It, I thought originally we were gonna need to close on Friday, July 1st, but it looks like we're gonna be able to keep everything up and running. Essentially, all of the icons and everything and the ledgers that have to move over, we've made a plan to do them at about 6 o'clock Friday morning, July 1st, so that we can still be up and running by 9:00.
Is this like opening the new?
New books.
The new year general ledger?
Yeah, so everything has, like, the budget that's been approved has to be entered in, right, and all the accounts that roll over.
That sort of thing, okay.
But all of the icons, you know, we have to create a new, a new year in Trio on all of the systems, so we've set up support.
Who's actually gonna be doing that?
The auditor and I.
Ah.
Be here at 6:00 if anybody wants to drink coffee. Just kidding. We, I, I know this is something that comes up and, and unfortunately continues to happen at, you know, at times that the municipality just can't spare the, the people, but I know that we need a new website. I know that we have concerns. We need to update that. We have two or three options, and I want to talk to the board about going out to bid for it. I'm hoping that once the treasurer can function on, on her own day-to-day, that we can move this up to the list, so we'll start putting an RFP together for you guys to look at. But we've started looking at neighboring towns and what they use. Chapley just did a complete do-over with Revision, who a lot of towns use, so I'm gonna reach out to some different places, get some RF, get an RFP going and really hopefully this fall concentrate on getting a new website.
Great.
It's easier. The last thing for me to speak to the board about.
Is that in the budget someplace?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Under municipal? Computer repair, computer repair and software.
How much do we have there?
There is about 5,000 in that line.
Okay.
And the quotes, really, the biggest thing about these, because you pay an annual fee for the website, the biggest cost is getting the information moved over. But I'm hoping, you know, getting, so right now, we have minutes, tax bills since I started in 2006. That's one thing. We archive all that. A lot of towns don't. So the biggest thing is moving all those PDFs to the new one. But I'm certain that with help of people like Dan Crampsett that have those skills, that maybe we can hire them on the side to help us sort some of that over. I think he's shaking his head yes back there. Thank you, Dan. It help, and support, and town, the town staff will be able to do something. But that's where the money comes from, is the manual labor of moving it over. The creation of the website and the yearly fee isn't gonna take much.
Typically, when you're putting a new website in, there's, there's ever-evolving technology platforms for going websites, so we should look at, at that as well. I think a consultant can help us with that. I don't know that it's related, but personally, I think the email system for the town is pretty antiquated as well. It's not very user-friendly. We've had, I, we've had people trouble, you know, getting access to it. And so maybe we could go to a product that, if we can't do it because of cost, then maybe we could think about putting, putting that on the agenda for next year.
Yeah, and we've looked at some of these, because it has come up before. We've looked at some of the, you know, the Gmails and some of the other, other more, you know, easier to access websites. And I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but there were a lot of disadvantages as far as the employee or the, the committee, let's just say, being able to change settings and change passwords, you know, short as, like, where it is now, it's all set by the administrator. So if, if David, you know, walks off the job tomorrow, we have access and can change his password and can do all that, whereas if it's a Gmail, David can just change it and, you know. There's, there was a lot of different areas, but, yeah.
I just asked him to look at it.
It definitely is something that needs to be done as well.
It's not a very.
User-friendly.
User-friendly system. Leave it at that.
Okay, so the last thing that I wanted to talk to you guys, not I personally, let's just make that clear. I got a lot of, a lot of people, especially on Friday and Saturday and on Election Day, that, that came to me and asked me to share their thoughts, and I'll certainly give you their names off camera if you'd like, but. And even some people that were at town meeting on Saturday. They are, they are asking, there's a group of people that have formed together that essentially want to either ask your support and you creating a warrant article for a November vote, or, or supporting them to do it with, with a legal opinion to, to ask the voters in November if they are willing or to change the style of the annual town meeting to go by secret ballot. You know, even some of the people that were there at the end of the, the meeting, you know, we started with 50. We ended with 20, some odd voters, 25 voters. So many people said to us, you know, there's, there's, we've got rec closing ceremonies that day, we've got a birthday party, we've got this, they just can't go and sit there. And then you've got a group of people that say they're just uncomfortable, you know, voting how they truly feel with the person, you know, with a person sitting next to them that might judge them if, you know, Billy doesn't get his raise or if the fire truck doesn't get moved forward. And, and again, I mean, these are legitimate voters that are coming forward. We have a couple of people that are willing to petition if necessary, if you don't want to move it forward yourself, to petition and collect the signatures and move it forward. However, this is a major change for the town, so it's not like just writing an article. I know there's one out there now to switch from a three to a five-member select board. And that's something easy that, that really anybody could write. There's a legal way of asking the voters if they want to change from the way we do town meeting now into a secret ballot. So they're, they're looking for your support in at least letting legal write the question, and then they would take it from there with the petition. So I told them I would bring it forward, so.
Thoughts?
I got a thought. On Candidates Night the other night, that was a hot topic, how we're gonna get more participation. Then, then Saturday during town meeting, we had very little participation. And honestly, I don't see it getting any better. I, and I've always been, I've been that guy that's, okay, I, I like town meeting because I get to argue my point, but what do we have? How many? Do you remember the count that we had during COVID when we did the?
I believe it was over 700.
Yeah, it was 700 and some votes.
By ballot versus.
And, you know, we, we have all these public hearings and this and that, and we get, at the end of a meeting, 25. That's not representing the town acting very well at all. And it seems to be a small group of people that run town meeting and make the decisions for a larger, larger mass. And after the way town meeting went last Saturday, I am definitely for putting it on a ballot.
564 people voted by secret ballot the year of COVID.
Yeah, that's a, that's a hell of a lot better than 24.
I mean, it should go out to the people, I would think, and let, you know, let people in town decide.
Yeah, and that's all they're asking for, to see it put on, put it on a ballot and let the voters decide.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't know. There's, there's such a history with town meetings in New England. They've, they've worked for decades or centuries, I guess, that I think there's something quite unique about a town meeting. And I think when you attend one, you have an opportunity to be better informed about what you're voting on, which is what I like about it, because you get people to stand up and say what they like or don't like about a particular issue.
Or person. Or person, yes, they do have that opportunity.
Yeah. The point is that that exchange, I think, is informative. I find it informative, and I think people do. And that, to me, is the, the, the advantage of having a town meeting. I think the timing is a real issue. I think June is, is problematic. The weather's too nice. This one happened to line up on Father's Day. I know that's the way the state said it. Before we just put it on the ballot, I'd, I'd love to think about how we can get some input from the community on this, to understand sort of what the pros and cons are. Are there things that we could do to improve participation and attendance at the town meeting? For instance, I've heard that there used to be food there. There was daycare. I mean, there were things that were designed to encourage and make it easy for people to come out. Now, I, I, I wasn't here during those years, so I, I don't know. I haven't had a chance to see what, what maybe led to the decline.
There's a 4-H Club used to do that, and they just kind of dissolved and downed.
Why they stopped doing it was because the meetings got shorter and shorter.
Right.
So the meetings were getting done before noon time, well.
Nobody's staying by the lunch.
Coming lunch, so everybody bailed.
I get, I'm just one vote here. I, I would love to create an opportunity to hear from people about what they, what they like, don't like, whether they just think it's, it's, it's had its time and its past. I'd love to understand what other communities are doing. I don't, I don't know what other towns are doing.
Chapley and Lebanon vote on everything by secret ballot now?
They do.
Waterboro does too.
Waterboro does too.
Waterboro does too. So I, I guess I'd like to hear more about it before.
So do you want to schedule?
Put it on a ballot and say, let the people.
I mean, we can do one or two. I mean, you can schedule a public hearing. If the board is considering putting it on a ballot, we can schedule a public hearing and get input. The flip side of it is, is you can, you can authorize them to get a legal opinion on if it's worded correctly and let them try to gather signatures on a petition, because that says something there if the voter will.
That's what I mean, yeah.
That's what we talked about before, was if they go out and get the petition, that's enough. If they can load it up, just like, just like the guy coming with the salt thing. You get your petition, we voted on it, they voted against it. We can do the same thing here.
But did they got enough signatures to at least get it on the ballot and let the?
Then you know kind of what people in town think.
So, I mean, we can have a public hearing and.
Sounds like we would anyways.
We would anyways.
If we were gonna be doing that.
So, I mean, it would, it'd all fall in line, you know, what we have to do anyways, but, you know, I think, I think the last, last town meeting we had, we actually had a large group, was when they tried getting rid of, what's it, COVID Drive? Remember COVID Drive? Where they're trying to discontinue that? It was huge. And then when that article came, poof, got small again, you know? It, it takes something like that to get people there. Either in June or March, you're gonna have the same problem.
How was it in, I was gonna say, years ago, like, when they used to do it in March? I mean, why the, why the move?
I have no idea. That's, I mean, I've been here since 06, and it's always been June, so I don't know what, how long ago.
I think timing, the extent to which there is a chance to do something different with timing, it's just one of the considerations that.
They might have been on a fiscal year. Were they on a calendar year? I don't know if they changed that.
I haven't seen anything that would preclude it, but, you know, perhaps there is a good reason why we couldn't do it.
Can't imagine having, having a town meeting in March with snow.
Well, well, or, or April, whatever. I mean, it doesn't.
And the school is also, you know, you guys have authorized the school to go by secret ballot. They've made, you know, they, they're going all by secret ballot. They're not having open town meetings anymore. And we didn't ask the voters about that. We let the school committee just take the decision.
We authorize our MMA to look through the petition or help, help them write the petition.
They'd have to, they'd have to essentially would write it, because a normal, and I don't, and I don't take this wrong for anybody that's interested in writing the petition, but it's, I mean, it's gotta be written in a particular way to make sure that it, it's written legally, so. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't write it my, you know, myself.
Before we write a petition, wouldn't we have a public hearing on it?
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna write the petition. We're gonna, well, we're gonna assist with the article. And then we're gonna give it to them.
Excuse me, article, not petition. You're right.
So we write the article. They, it's up to them to put it on a petition and go out and gather the signatures and all that. If it comes back, if it comes back with enough signatures, then you would have public hearings.
If it doesn't come, if people aren't interested.
The selectmen couldn't advance an, an article for this?
Oh, yeah, the selectmen can too. You absolutely can.
If they come to us with a petition.
Yep.
Okay, we have to put it, put an article.
Right, but they're not, right, but they're not gonna come to you.
They don't necessarily have to go a petition route. The selectmen could do an article.
That's correct, right. But they're willing to take it off your plate with your help of allowing them to get some legal advice writing it.
We're better off having them go out there. They're gonna do the, they're gonna tell us whether or not town wants it or not. They're gonna tell us whether or not there's, there's a want for this.
How many signatures are required?
It has to be 10% of the last gubernatorial election, so currently it was 110.
That's not gonna get you anything. I mean.
That's not gonna what?
Relatively easy to get. It's not gonna tell you anything, so it's, it's, you know, it's really of limited value.
10% of the last gubernatorial election. Yes. That's how many signatures, approved signatures they'd have to have on the petition to make it onto a ballot. And then you would vote on it at the polls. It would be a secret ballot question. Do you want to change the method of voting from this to that? You'd vote yes or no.
Is there a group in town that we think would want to pursue a petition?
Yeah, they have pursued several, yes.
There's a bunch of people that want to pursue this.
That's why it's coming up, I guess.
Okay.
At least if we.
So what's the pleasure? You're saying?
I'm saying that we authorize, authorize them to utilize MMA, to have them write the, write the petition for them. That way there, it's legal, and they're gonna take it out of our hands, and they're gonna go get it signed up, and if it comes back with enough signatures, well, then we vote on, put it on an article. Well, don't even have to vote on it.
Well, if they can get enough signatures.
It's just good practice.
If they have to get like 100 plus signatures, that's.
Well, that's twice as many people. I mean, that's more effort than the town meeting. I mean, that's twice as many people that showed up there, so it's, you know what I mean? There's some effort, at least, you know, I mean, on the petitioner's part, and then, you know, have public hearings and let both sides be heard in November.
Got a petition running around right now, trying to go to five selectmen. They can't get that petition signed up. The recall for me, that went on for like six months, and I didn't get signed up. If they get this signed up, it'll show there's some interest in it.
Then we would have some public meetings, and then we could get the input and stuff and, and kind of get questions asked of people, I would think. You know, the pros and the cons of it.
In drafting it, it wouldn't matter whether the selectmen wanted to advance it or we wanted to leave it to a petition process. The, the article would be drafted the same.
Right, correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So knowing that we're gonna have to deal with this one way or the other, there's a group that's interested in doing it, and we want to make sure it's done legally if they're gonna pursue that.
And that's what, kind of what they're saying is.
I'm getting, I'm a little slow here.
They just don't want to write it, and it'd be wrong.
Sure.
Waste their time, get all the signatures, and all of a sudden it's not right.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we authorize the, the writing of the petition.
The writing of the warrant article to be presented to a petitioner.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I guess my concern for, for this type of situation is, what would it do to the committees, the budgets, the deadlines, the fiscal year ends? Will that all fall into place with all that if it gets moved around? The timelines that it takes to go over all the budgets, stuff like that? I mean, all this has to be moved. If, if the meeting is moved, then all that timeline has to be.
Well, the, the timing of the meeting isn't gonna move, so essentially, essentially what the group would like to do is get their signatures and ask you in November to approve it or disapprove it. I believe, and do not quote me on this, I believe it wouldn't take effect until the following year anyways. So it, whether it takes place in June of '23 or June of '24, there's, there's something in this statute that I've read, so it may not take effect until the following, and that's to get all of these things in order. I mean, the, your election of officers for the committees that you elect at town meeting would then go to the nomination process, like selectmen, like school committee, there's a warrant of finance. You know, it would all, it's all gonna be changed over, so you'd still be voting in June. It's just gonna be by secret ballot. So as far as your timeline, that's not gonna change.
Ray, it would be no different than two years ago when we did during COVID. Remember that? Oh, you weren't on the committee then, were you?
Correct.
Okay, you're new to that, okay. So back in COVID, we couldn't do county town meetings, so we did it on a ballot. And that's when we got the 600 and some votes on the ballot that year. And so it'd be the same process, except instead of going to the school on Saturday morning to vote, you're just gonna be casting a ballot on that Tuesday.
Everything would happen that Tuesday. So when you came in to vote for selectmen, you'd actually get a ballot with all those warrant articles on it as well.
So you, they wouldn't change absolutely nothing in the, the committees, other than, you know, maybe it might, might make, might make the public hearings more.
Right, I mean, the warrant of finance would still be elected, but instead of being elected at an open town meeting, they'd have to take out nomination papers, just like your selectmen, school committee, and road commissioner. They'd get their names on a ballot, and they'd get elected that way. So it all still happens in June.
I, I, I think it would be great if we could get the school budget and the town on the same.
That's a conversation for the selectmen to, to have with the school committee.
But it seems, if we're gonna go to a ballot, why not one ballot to cover it all? But I guess that's something we can.
Yes, they have reasons for like, why they like to do it earlier.
And that could affect the timing of some of these committee.
I was wondering, when the fiscal year end is actually.
June 30th.
July 1st. Yeah. But I think you can vote on a, on a budget substantially in advance of a fiscal year start. I don't, it's, it's really a matter of when you can get your budget developed, and, you know, that's all a matter of time.
Yeah, and, and the only one that we'd have to look into, so that, so the road commissioner will use, Will, for example. So Will's current term, his current term as road commissioner expires June 30th, so as long as he gets sworn in before July 1, he's all set. But had David lost that election, his last day would have been June 14th, the day of that election. So the selectmen end the day of the election, so it's gonna be different. If we move everything to April, let's just say that the selectman loses.
So these are all the details we've got to figure out.
There's a lot of details to sort out.
My concern.
That, that's only if we move the town meeting. Right now, we're only discussing just going to a.
I was just piggybacking on doing it with the school, like you mentioned. They like, real quick, Dennis, the, the only reason the school likes to do it early is that if their budget fails, they want to have time to put another budget forward before the new fiscal year starts.
That, that has happened.
And last thing I'll add, as Dennis is so patient with me, we had 1,237 voters vote in the last gubernatorial election, so it'd be 10% of that, so 124.
The, the reason we stopped having the March town meeting was exactly like Jen said. It was when we changed municipal to a fiscal year from a calendar year.
That's what I thought.
And at that time, they sent out taxes for a year and a half for people to pay because of the change of going to June. So we did it to match up with the school. And when, 10, 12 years ago, when the school, was the last time the school budget failed, is the reason why the school, because they was doing it in June. And school always did it in June, always.
Always one meeting.
And long before we even changed our fiscal years. So the school got a little nervous because the town meeting voted down their budget. But the way it read at the time anyway, with state, when you vote down the school budget, what they do is they operate on the year before's budget.
That's still the case.
Okay, so it didn't stop any services. But the school wanted to move their town meeting back farther, so that in case it did fail, come July 1st, the budget would be in place. And just for this secret ballot vote, and Jen knows the number better than I do, for the school budget, which is three quarters of our budget, they made a huge social media thing notifying everybody of the vote. And the public hearing they had at the school before the vote, I do not believe there was one, not one citizen that wasn't involved either on the school committee or the warrant finance committee that was there. I don't believe there was absolutely nobody. And I believe the secret ballot for the school budget was, secret ballot was 90, a little over 90 votes.
94.
94 votes. So when you had.
Still more than town meeting.
No, no, I, I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is, normally when we have elections, it's lots of times there's stuff tied into the state, and that's when you get your larger amounts, or it's elections, with local elections and, and things like that. I mean, we got, you know, a little over 500 or whatever at the last election.
You know, I wonder if a factor here isn't the fact that taxes have been relatively flat. And for a lot of people, that's a voting issue that will get them out and, you know, cause them to sit up and, and speak out at a town meeting, with them being, you know, basically held flat for two, maybe?
I think you're on to something, but, I mean, I've been going to town meeting for a long time. Well, I wouldn't say a long time. I'm not old, but, well, road commissioner nine years, and then, so, you know, I've been few, few of many ways. And, I mean, like I said, we had that one town meeting that was chock full for about two hours, and that was it. And other than that, and we've had all kinds of things. The only thing I ever brought everything, buddy, I was like, someone pat handing or something, you know? The only thing I ever brought everything, buddy, I was like someone pat handing or something, you know? But we just don't, you know, Dennis might be right. You know, the only time you're going to get participation would be like when we had the state, the state elections. You join stuff and then people come out to vote for that.
Yeah.
You hope they're all informed, you know, but, you know, that is the only problem with getting rid of town meetings. You know, there are people who aren't informed, but if you look at the people in the room, 90% of the people, well, not 90%, a majority of the people in that room are usually up here at some point.
Yeah.
Have an interest being part of it.
Majority, you know.
I guess all I'm trying to say is when there's not a significant issue at a town meeting, my guess is that may be a contributing factor to the low turnout. If you have significant issues, then I think you run a risk in a ballot. You don't know, because there isn't an opportunity for a lot of discussion maybe around those issues. You can have some chaos.
I will say, Tom, that if you want participation, guaranteed participation at a town meeting, raise the tax rate a dollar a thousand.
That's right.
And you will have, you will have participation.
I hope we never, I don't want to be doing that in my tenure. But if it comes up, if you get a hot issue, whether it's tax rates or something else, handling that with a ballot may not be the most advantageous way.
See this room right here, how many, how many people are here? What do we got?
Probably 15.
What do we average?
10.
10 to 15.
Yeah, every week 10 people show up to a selectman's meeting, okay? And I do believe you're right, I know where you're going with this. People are content, they, everything, their tax rate's low, their roads get plowed, those kids are in a good school, so nobody shows up. And even going to a closed ballot, yeah, they'll show up here.
Yeah.
And really they should, you know, when there's an issue. Not just the one meeting a year, they should be showing up here if there's an issue, they should be showing up here.
And if you, I mean, you take the time to look at the COVID ballot, the results from those 564 people. I mean, the first article on there was a $330,000 fire truck. I mean, every article passed by secret ballot. You know, I mean, 564, none of those articles failed, whether they be in.
But if it was accompanied with a big tax increase, that might have been a different outcome.
Right.
And I guess.
Yeah, it's going to be a good question for the voters.
For me anyways, to be, look, there's a motion's been made, I, did you second that?
Yes, she did.
Yes.
Bernie, any?
Yes, thank you. I very much support the voters being heard on this issue. And I do think that a written ballot will prevail. And I like the word written versus secret because secret to me implies there's something wrong. You know, there's a reason you can't, you don't have to tell people how you vote in this country, shouldn't have to. We don't have to take a civics course or a test or demonstrate any knowledge to vote for the President of the United States. So why on earth do we need to demonstrate a knowledge of local goings on to vote? I agree ideally, people would educate themselves, but there are many opportunities to do that before the town meeting. Come to a warrant finance committee meeting, watch people make their presentations. And maybe people do watch, watch the video, we don't know that. But I think by the time most people go to vote, they've already decided. If they had questions, there have been many opportunities prior to get that. Frankly, I don't care, I was away this weekend is the only reason I wasn't at town meeting. But I don't really want to, I don't feel I should have to sit through hours to exercise my right to vote. I don't think I should have to listen to the same people who have already expressed their opinions either at these meetings or because they serve on a committee. I already know they voted to recommend or not to recommend and so forth. So I, the other thing is by keeping the current system in place, it's one day out of the year that everyone has to vote. If it's a written ballot, I believe, then you could do absentee ballot. It really broadens when people can vote, even just the fact that they have all day, eight to eight versus eight to noon or whatever, it's very restrictive. So I really support going forward with this. And again, I think you'll find that it carries, I think it's what people want. I do agree with what you're saying, Tom, on it's a tradition, tradition, excuse me. There is a loss to this, but my thought is we can still like have an annual act and picnic, a get together where people can exchange ideas, talk about things they aspire for the town and all that. But I think the town meeting as a form of governance has come and gone.
And you'd still be doing a public hearing, so that'd be kind of like your town meeting, except you wouldn't be voting on it.
Any other comments, Joyce?
Good point Bernie, on a written ballot, not a secret ballot, very good point. The last part is exactly what I'm thinking of. Does this mean we would no longer be a town meeting form of government? And then what kind of government would we be? There are several kinds of town meeting forms of government. So I think that would take a lot of research to see.
And actually I can tell you, the answer is yes, we would still fall under 25, 2525 and 2528. We're still a town meeting form of government based on, it's just a change in the method. The selectmen actually, as they have in the past, always have the opportunity to do it at an open town meeting or a written ballot or however they so chose, just like they've done with the school. They've allowed the school to do written with no change in the form of government. So there would be no, no actual change.
There would not be a change.
Because I believe we still have to go through the same procedure, we still have to have our public hearing and everything.
If anything, you have more public hearings because you don't.
I was going to say, you would need, I would think you'd need more.
Like you said, go to more meetings, people go to more meetings, go, you know, whether it's. And a lot of people watch that cable channel, they watch, you know, and I think Bernie was right. A lot of them watch that and make their minds up, you know, before.
You know, well, I think a lot of people do do that. But I think the important thing is that we had 70 articles on the warrant.
72.
Standing there. And how many are going to just, oh, you know?
Yeah, to the end of the day, that's what that.
At the end of the day.
And there's, and there is a lot.
Or they're going to do the old multiple choice thing in high school.
Yes, ABC color ball.
ABC, you know, here, 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 here.
I honestly think there at town meeting, most of, there's some people there that go to town meeting that don't come to these meetings and don't go to the finance and all the other, you know, public hearings that don't, don't know what those things are either. They're flipping the card just because the guy beside them flipped the card, you know?
Oh, you're probably absolutely right. But I think that more educated, more educated people are, the less that that happens. But I would, you know.
Definitely a lot to look into.
A lot to look into, thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess I would look, I'd like to see, you're going to be looking at popping in the website, new website, so that people are, or it's more up to date. Would there, would it be a possibility also looking at it where the general public can send emails in if they have particular questions, you're looking at people that are looking at APAT, looking at all the meetings through that, if they would be able to send questions in at that point in time and those be distributed to whatever committees there are, I think that that would be an advantage.
During the committee meetings?
Not necessarily during the committee meetings, but I mean, if, you know.
Prior to.
Right. Because I mean, the, it doesn't go on, we're not live when the committees are going on. So that wouldn't be able to happen, but I think that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, and it is even with the update, the website that needs to be updated. We do have a contact us and I think your wife can attest to that because she often sends me messages through contact us or the town's current website. So that is up and running now and we delegate it to the appropriate place. But it would need to be updated with the website as well.
Hi, is there any way to do like the best of both worlds where you still have a town meeting and still allow people to do their votes ahead of time? But if something changes during town meeting for a warrant, then it would go by the town?
Can't do that because if we go to town meeting and we're going off our warrant and there's amendments made to the article at town meeting, then the people who voted on the article prior would be voting on something that's not even in the article, in the warrant.
Right, so that's what I'm saying is if it was to the point that the articles are there as written and if it changes at town meeting, so be it, then it changes and the people at the town meet and have the right to vote. But for the most part, people have a say in the article if there's no changes on it, so.
I think that would be where the public meetings come in before the vote is because we wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, you, you.
Yeah.
You'd have people voting on something that they might not vote.
Right, well, she, but what she's saying is that essentially if the article changed at town meeting, then that, that vote, written vote wouldn't count. Because if they made a change at a town meeting, right? So she's saying that, you know, those counts, I mean, I'm not sure that you could legally, but it's an idea, it's an idea.
Well, thank you Laurie, well.
Can we give a table of warrant articles?
No, that's up to the moderator. I mean, he normally cannot adjourn a meeting if something's tabled. I mean, if you table it indefinitely, that means it just goes away, but.
Is there anybody else that'd like to comment before we take a vote on this? Okay, great. Okay, motion's been made and seconded?
Yeah.
All in favor? Motion passes.
So just so we're clear, I can ask for legal opinion on writing the article. I can pass it over to the petitioner and they can go from there, go from there.
Yep.
Very good. Rec department. Need an exam?
No, how's it going?
Going great.
It's a good thing. So I wanted to give a quick update as well. If anybody's been going by the field the past couple of days, they might have noticed that we've been clearing out some of the area in front, trying to dress it up a little bit. We've had John Denikamp and TJ Doms out there like crazy, madmans, working their butts off. I gave one idea and they've taken that idea and they've ran with it. So be looking for some flower gardens and some plants and that coming up soon. The second thing that I wanted to come and talk to you guys about is the parking lot. Now that the warrant has, or the article has passed, warrant passed. Now that it has passed at town meeting, we want to definitely get going on the parking lot itself. My question with that is does it have to go out to bid or can Will just do it where he's been our guy from day one? He's done a lot of work there already, he knows what we want, we know his quality work.
This is, how much did we have in the article, was it 30?
40.
40?
Yeah, it's gone up.
I personally think it needs to go out for a bid, a project of that size, David?
I was department heads right now.
Okay, all right. She's asking a question.
Well, I know, Sam's asking a question.
Yes.
And then, so.
Sam asked me to come up to help her through this.
So.
We can't do that?
Well, no, we're department heads right now, we're, we should be dealing with the department head. That's what we're doing right now. I'm trying to answer a question.
Laurie, just hang on for a second, okay? We'll get you, we'll get you up there in a minute.
She was there for support because she was the one that started the project.
So, yeah, I mean, we got $40,000 and that, we.
Doesn't our policy say that we have to go out to bid?
That's your, my Mac can pull it out, that's the policy.
I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't, no offense to, you know, all the work Will's done.
I guess in my mind, the way that I would be thinking about it is it's town property and he's one of the road commissioners for that part of town. So to kind of be doing, like who, who's the one that's in charge of doing, if we have anything at the sand shack? Would it be Adam?
Sand shack, you mean?
The sand shack, yeah, it would be Adam, right?
Well, it depends on what it is and they had this conversation, yeah.
Okay.
I need to understand the history on this.
We did delegate, we did delegate a few things to the guys.
This is what.
We did sign a thing.
So you have a town owned property maintenance policy and that might be what you're referring to. And I think, so any project or road related maintenance approved by the board of selectmen to be done on town owned properties will be performed by the road commissioners at town approved rates. Funds to be paid by the road commissioner will be exempt from the purchasing policy for maintenance.
This is not maintenance, no.
Yes and no, if you think about it, it's already been trimmed, now it just needs top done. Come on.
I'd want to hear from others. From my perspective, perhaps there's a bit of gray area there. I don't think there is, it's not maintenance, this is, this is something new. We're not maintaining something and I don't see why you wouldn't for a project of that size. The idea for going out to bid is to make sure that you have an opportunity to see multiple bids on a given project to make sure we're getting the best value for the town. And I think, personally, I think that's what ought to drive it, but David?
Well, no, no, you're right. I mean, when you get into the big money like that, you know, it's a star like you're just going to green the parking lot or something like that, so.
I agree.
And what ends up happening is it, you know, I feel pretty bad here because it probably shouldn't have brought up a long time ago.
Should have, yeah.
Because he's gone through a lot of work putting numbers together for this. And with our purchase, our policy says that we have to put it out to bid. We probably should have hit this off of the head before we had him, you know, he went and did all this work. But the problem is, is you're setting a bad precedent if we don't do it. So.
And you, you know, and it's a good time to deal with it because he's going to have the parking lot at some point. That's going to, you know, that's his side of town that's going to come down. He's dealing with the West Shore Drive Bridge. I mean, hopefully he's putting in for his time for all this work anyways, right? For your admin work.
So.
I mean, you've got all these, you know, but then you've got Goat Hill.
I assume you are.
Yeah, I mean, if I remember, I will by this.
Got to.
Wow, okay.
Goat.
Well, you're certainly free to put it, encouraged to put it in.
You've got Goat Hill that, you know, you've sent RFPs out for that, is that your, have you done work at Goat Hill or they just did their? Okay, but that's maintenance. But to work on the trail.
Is there a dollar limit on purchasing for new projects? I thought it was five.
Out to bid, five, yeah.
5,000. So, you know, I think that's a good threshold, it's our policy, I think we ought to stick to it. Kim?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, if it was something that was under that, then I think we'd have more, you know, lead way to say yes.
Did you have anything else? Because I want to give, you know, Laurie an opportunity.
No, I think, I think the only thing that makes it kind of hard as a pill to swallow or whatnot is the fact of all of the legwork, like David was saying, all of the legwork that he's already done, all of the work over there that he's already done to kind of help the whole process go forward. And then kind of if he was already thinking that this was his job, that he was going to have it, it's kind of a slap in the face, if you know what I mean.
And don't assume he's not going to get it. I mean, if they, even if they go through the bid process, they're going to take experience into it. They're going to take experience, they're going to take cost into it, they're going to take availability. I mean, they don't always go with the low bidder. I mean, they know what kind of work he performs and who he is. So don't, you know, don't, it's still a very good possibility that, you know, that he'll, they're just trying to be fair.
Oh, I know, I get that, okay.
Laurie, did you want to?
I'm just going to reiterate what she said. Will has been with us from the very beginning of this project and I'm, we thought we all had this hashed out a couple of years ago, before Tom got on the board, that anything that was to be done up at that rec field would go to Bill at town, up to Will at town rates and.
Maintenance.
It has to be maintenance, so.
Well, the parking lot that we did a couple of years ago is considered maintenance?
That's maintenance, the parking lot was already there. So that, if you regrade it, that's maintenance. When you're, when you're putting in a brand new parking lot, the problem is with this. I understand this is really crappy because the way we're doing, should have been taken care of before.
Yeah, for sure.
Let me, I'm speaking. So the problem is, is if we don't do this and we set a bad precedent, you have $40,000 and you're just letting him make up his own prices and submitting them like that, because that's what, that's what he did. Okay, unfortunately, he passed in the budget for that parking lot, okay? Without anybody else giving any price on that parking lot. So you're, you're giving that project to one individual and then we're the ones who have to answer for why does he get a $40,000 job? Why didn't I get a chance to bid on that job? I'm not bidding on that job, I'm just talking right now.
So what would the difference be between him doing a road and putting in the price for the road versus the parking lot?
As road commissioner, it's roads and bridges.
Roads and bridges.
I thought it was the same. I thought once we gave the selectmen the town property to do, I mean, the selectmen, Will, this side of town and the other, Adam, the other side of town, that whatever we did was going to be, as long as it was town prices, as long as it was the town prices, the same thing.
We fixed the transfer station, we put it out to bid, Pat Stevens did the work up there, not our road commissioner. Okay, we did the same thing up there, that's what we want to do here.
Any additional comments, Sam?
No.
Any other items, this body of your report?
Nope.
I think we, I think we've heard some views on this.
Only thing is, is how long do we put it out for bid for? Do I give you a date or is it just one that we can?
So normally we put things out for, you know, two to three weeks. I mean, we, you know, we have, and that's the other thing, I mean, she's going to need some assistance.
You're not going to put it out to.
No, we are going to put it out to bid. She's, I mean, she's given some, some assistance to the wording of it and not to take anything away from, from how she. to the wording of it and not to take anything away from, from how she's done that. But I mean, well, they need some work. And she knows, I mean, I don't mean that. I mean, I would have to reach out to a road person as well. That's not my area of expertise.
I was asked what you needed to do. I'm like, okay, take the top down, put some fill in.
So I'm going to, I mean, I'm going to say, because I'm not going to reach out to Will because that's, you know what I mean? We want him, we want him to bid on it. I'm going to reach out to David to help with the wording of the RFP and we'll try to get it out by the end of the week.
Perfect.
And we can put a stipulation in there of, you know, work must be completed by such and such date, where you know that, you know, you're interested in getting it done before soccer.
Anyways, I think in the RFP, just like we've done all the other ones. But, I mean, when we were going through the finance committee, when we were going through the budget process, one thing that I did ask for was a dimension, the size and this and that. Did we ever get that?
Not my area.
Was it being the wetlands up there, Laurie went and talked to Jason. So the area, it's not squared up. I just roughly did, I was like a hundred and eighty feet long and a hundred and twenty feet wide is roughly what it is. It's not squared up or nothing. That's just.
The area that was cut over.
Right. I mean, if somebody wanted to really go up there and, you know, start doing diagonal, you could get a pretty good idea. But I just, in case somebody asks, that's the rough number I came up with.
We put it out. We have to kind of give a dimension.
Yeah, and somebody's going to have to, I mean, and not, and that's part of the reason why, you know, we want to make sure that he was billing along the way. You know what I mean? We appreciate everything, you know what I mean? But somebody's going to have to give me those numbers. I mean, I can't, you know, I can't go out and do that.
Who can do that?
I can do that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, David.
I think what we want to do though is expedite this. Let's get an RFP right out.
Soon as I can.
And if you guys want to get started on this.
Yesterday.
When we do the, when we do it, we ought to put on a date of start within a certain period of time. That way there, we can get this done this season.
Is there a particular timeframe that this should be done because of events taking place down there?
I would like it done before soccer season kicks off.
And when does that start usually? Is it like first to September?
September.
Okay. All right.
The very beginning of September, just because that seems to be one of the heaviest number for kids.
Yep.
So if we're going to have so many kids, we could have two games going on at the same time or two practices going on at the same time. It gets really congested. I mean, to think about it, we have twenty-one kids on the pre-K kindergarten T-ball team and the parking lot is chucker block full.
Yeah.
So if we can have more space for knowing that we're going to have more than that there, that'd be fantastic.
And when they're putting the parking lot in, it's not going to affect you guys anyways. You just block that off or whatever.
Yeah, it's on the opposite side. And there is a gate over there that you can open so you can come in through that side of the field. And then there's the skidder width that goes behind the fences. And I don't know if that can be part of getting, you know, cleaned up with the debris and that, so we can either have it so that it can be grass or have it as a road. I don't know what we want to do. My only other question is, there's the man-made pond that sits right there, too. Are we allowed to clean up around that so that it's, okay?
Actually, I think you're supposed to.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can go in with like the loppers and that and just kind of clean up like we would at home.
That's the retention pond you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, you can see like there's the, the big crushed stone down the back and, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other department head, committee?
Guy, guy, one thing.
Certainly.
When you put it in the bid, in that price, too, that was to finish ditching, because there's a ditch that goes in that retention pond and it's, it hasn't been maintained. So I put something in there, a note saying that, you know, you need to, you know, continue the ditching into the retention pond because the water just, it all holds in the ditch because it can't go into the retention pond. So that was, in the price, that was to finish ditching into the retention pond and everything.
Very good. Thanks, Will. Very good. Any other department head, committee chair updates? Evening, Rob.
Transfer station superintendent. I'm just going to give you some updates on some demo that we've been receiving. In the last two months that I've been supervisor there, we've have spent almost thirteen thousand dollars in demo, just to be aware. We took in six hundred and eighty-nine tires, came out to ten, just over ten tons of tires, and it cost us twenty-five hundred dollars. So just give you a little update of what's going on up there for prices.
Any idea how that compares?
I have not gone.
To prior years?
Prior years. I have not. This has only been in this month, in the two months, so I haven't researched that. But it looked quite large to me when I added everything up.
Yeah, I just don't have point of reference.
The demo's gone up in price. Now, when you, when you're observing what's going on up there, the demo, who's using the demo the most? Is it just average people just throwing a few things here, there? Are there lots of people coming in?
There's been quite a few.
Contractors and stuff?
Well, I don't know if they're contractors or not, but, you know, there is.
Truckloads of stuff.
Truckloads, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
Yeah. And on top of that, I would like to see us go into the four-foot, nothing over four feet long, because it's easy for me to move maneuver without getting in the container. Because a lot of people just throw in a whole sheet of plywood and that whole sheet of plywood takes up a lot of space in that container.
We've talked during budget time, we're talking, doing some fees. I know with the tires, you know, I, I think I'm paying ten dollars a tire to get rid of them when I go, when I get demo, ten dollars a tire.
Right.
But I don't believe there's one person out there that wouldn't pay five dollars to get rid of a tire.
Right. Now, I am looking into a, a place in Massachusetts that will drop a forty-foot container off for the month.
Yeah.
This is what I've got information. I'm going to get in secondhand information.
Was he charged for that, though, right?
Right. And when he was doing it, when the guy came up from Massachusetts and picked up his tires, he was getting like a dollar and twenty-five cents a tire, a dollar fifty a tire. So even with that, would be cheaper than what we're paying now. And it depends on how many tires you have. The more tires you have, the cheaper it is. So I don't know what the cutoff is with that company.
But still, at the end of the day, we've got to, we've got to cut a lot, you know, figure out.
Well, we've talked about.
Robin, I mean. Robin has come to, to my office and we have gathered information from five surrounding towns. We presented that back to Robin to review and he gave me two additional towns that he'd like to look at as well. So my office is in the process of gathering that and we'll have it to him by the end of the week.
Look at fees.
Fees, what the fees are each town. So when he gets that other information, he'll come back to you next week with a recommendation. I think the other thing that it's important for the board and the public to hear from you is that we're also often getting statements that it's, you know, it's an easy place to bring things to because we don't charge.
Correct.
We're one of the last ones that don't charge for demos and often people that legitimately own property in town are bringing large items from out of state or neighboring towns or for friends because Acton doesn't charge. And they've inadvertently are making more and more comments they're getting around.
Right. And that's one of the comments I've, I talked to some called friend and he was kind of, I kind of picking his brain about a transfer station in another town and he didn't know I was the new supervisor for Acton and this kind of, kind of, and he said a few things that kind of caught my attention. And this is why I was bringing it up to, you know, everybody that comes in there has a permit sticker. I got Roger, he's right on it now. He's making sure, and they come in and they say, yeah, I live here. This is my address, you know, in, in Acton. And I write them out and I look on the clipboard up there. Yep, you have ad, yep, there it is. And I put their address, I mean, their registration down and I give them a sticker. You know, they show me that they own property in, in Acton.
We often hear from other taxpayers that say that they don't feel like they should have to pay, you know, they shouldn't have to pay an increased transfer station budget if they don't have items that, to dispose of. And we had talked in the past, too, about with tax bills. So this might be a good time to look at it, giving everybody. So in Chapley, for example, when we get our tax bills, everybody gets a demo card for a free load. So even if it's just once in a while that you're doing it, you know, you're offering something to them, one free load a year.
We have.
A lot of regulars.
A lot of regulars that come in, you know, it's not, I don't know if they have a project here and then they skip, you know, and then they come in again and they, you know, it's a routine, there's a couple of people, it's a routine, it's a routine thing.
Yeah, I think there's, the cost increase are coming from increased volume, but increased cost for disposal as well. So we're getting a double whammy here.
Correct.
Quite frankly, normally I probably wouldn't be in favor of fees, but given the increased cost for disposal, I don't know what's going on in that budget. But I do recall in the last budget cycle, it went up significantly.
Yes.
It may continue to go up. That would cause me to look at fees.
And also, we need something up there to be able to pack them containers a little better. Like I said, you know, somebody throw in a piece of plywood, somebody throw in a, a mattress, because they're charging us thirty dollars a mattress at the disposal fee right now. So with all that taken into place.
We're just letting them throw in for free, correct?
Right.
We're letting them throw for free, but we're paying thirty on top of that.
Correct. That is correct. So that's just kind of the.
Okay. And we have an idea that we're putting together for next week to address that, right? Once we get the rest of the demo fees together. So we'll put them back on the agenda as soon as we get the other two towns and cover that piece as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Be nice, could you, I think probably what he should do is get the information from the other towns and kind of write up a list of what he thinks he would charge on each one of these individual things.
Yep.
Maybe the, we're going to be assigning new liaisons in this meeting. So when, whoever that liaison with, I suggest that we pair them up with you and, and let's take a look at this and see what can be brought back in terms of a proposal. Okay?
Yep. And there's also another thing I need to bring up is the, the old compact that we used to recycle the number one, the number seven plastic that we don't use, haven't used for a number of years now, at least four or five. I haven't had the guy up there to look at it since Bob did. Bob had him up there four years ago, I think, and the pistons are leaking. The floor, I have drained all the water out of the floor. The floor is pretty weak. There are holes in the top of the container. I would like to get rid of that and send it in for scrap or whatever and open up that bay door. Maybe I can get a tractor trailer in there to haul the cardboard. Instead of making Punske five or six trips, maybe we can get one container to, and ship out, you know, two or three truckloads. You know, I'm not trying to take money out of Punske's thing, but, you know, we're costing a lot.
Nothing wrong with that.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm just looking at a cost of fixing for the town.
Sure.
Is, you know, if we can get more cardboard in one truck instead of sending four trucks, you know, it's going to save the hauling fee.
Good thinking.
So, you know, something to think about, getting rid of that, that container that we don't use no more.
Okay, Robin. Anything else, Robin?
That's it.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay. Old business. Treasurer. I believe effective, was it last Wednesday or the Wednesday before? I've lost track.
So you made the offer the Wednesday before and she accepted.
She showed up for her first day last Wednesday. Is that right?
Uh, yes, right around there.
Yeah. Kelly Burgess has been appointed as treasurer. Kelly comes to us with over twenty years' experience and a whole variety of accounting, business management background. She's got, she's very well-educated. No particular municipal experience, but we had seven to ten resumes. I forget exactly. I know we talked to at least seven people and Kelly was, we had very good, you know, capable applicants, but Kelly was clear choice of the selectmen. So she was appointed and she has, as I said, she's already started. She's working with the auditors. Jen is spending a lot of time with her, helping to explain how we do business, what our accounting system is like and so on. So I think we're off to a very good start there. And I think we talked about the auditors have a, a part of their business that provides consulting services that we're going to be taking advantage of so that Kelly can have the, the benefit of their expertise in getting up to speed on everything. So very good hire. She is, is generally here during business hours.
Yes.
So feel free to stop in and say hello. Delightful person.
We'll bring her, so one of the upcoming meetings, put her.
Yes.
Pitch her on Facebook.
Okay. New bridge road fence.
So that's just on there as old business. The attorney's not quite done drafting it, but he has all the information and should be ready for a signature next week. This is essentially the letter to the property owner saying, based on the two-rod road, three-rod road, the way it was laid out, these are the liabilities if you leave it up.
Very good.
That will be ready.
Siding contract.
Okay, so the last we left off with the siding contract was that you instructed me to reach out to the low bidder and essentially have him convert his bid more to our RFP. He has done that. He has crossed out some items. I've had some phone conversations with him. We've spoken with Jason. Tom and I also spoke to him. It's, it's equivalent. He's going to do some, some wrapping rather than some painting, but it's, everything is, is there. He can pencil us in and hopefully a few weeks, maybe, you know, by the end of July. So other than unforeseen circumstances, which is, conditions, which is the rotted wood we talked about, and we do have a backup plan for that with, with building maintenance and, you know, especially.
Building maintenance budget.
You can do some of that.
Okay.
So the total bid was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Very good.
There are, if there's, if you're so moved to sign, there's two places. But you guys have already seen this. It's the same. It's just, you had me follow up, so.
Any questions by anyone as we go about signing these?
There's two pages. We have to make a motion first.
Oh, we, okay. I need a motion?
All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from Scott Roofing Service.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
My comment doesn't go specifically deciding, but it's related. In the contracts with vendors, is there any provision for having, even at the town's expense, someone come in and inspect it before they receive their final payment? The reason I'm bringing this up is these windows are very difficult to close and lock. I don't know if it, if they were not installed properly, if it's the windows, but there's a problem with them. And so I'm just wondering, you know, should we have paid someone to check them out before they got their final payment, if they've been paid? So just a thought as we go forward into other contractual.
So these windows were checked and based on, based on some of the frames of them, they were aware of that, but they were checked. And there is a provision in this contract as well for the final payment.
Right.
For it to be inspected.
Who will do that inspection?
The code officer would be the best one out there.
The code officer does that?
Whoever you, whoever you deem.
Well, no, but.
Not me.
Clearly it's not you.
They're your fourth party.
It's not going to be me because I don't have that expertise. David, you do some of these things?
I don't do siding.
So, yeah, yeah.
So the code officer would be asked to do this? There you go. All right. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor?
Clearly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So is it just this one?
No, there's two. There's that one and the next page. See the acceptance? About halfway down, we hand this.
Oh, date of acceptance, okay.
And then place for signature. So if two of you can sign, I know that Tom had originally indicated he wasn't going to sign.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. I should have abstained. Thank you.
All right. Clearly. I felt they forgot. All right, I'll send those down to David.
Yeah.
Let's go with it. Yeah, I'll give you those back and then.
Oh, thank you. Yep. Oh, that's the town.
I know that vote was just taken, but if I could correct the record, I would like to abstain from that vote. This contractor is someone that I've, I've known since he played basketball as a kid. So I encourage him to, to, to submit the bid, so I want to abstain from this.
Can you send that back to him and have him sign?
All of those, two of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thought it was too easy. There we go.
Okay. Moving on, new business, mass gathering permit.
So we have two of them tonight. Both are repeat offenders in Acton. The first one is the Family Circus. Circus is coming back to town August 17th. I reached out to codes, sheriffs, fire departments to see if anybody had any concerns. I heard back, zero. So that's your first one. It's on August 17th. And then...
Is that big, is that at the fairgrounds?
At the fairgrounds.
Okay.
And then many years standing has been our Vacation Land Volkswagen Association. It says Sunday, August 7th. The first thing I saw was 17th. I'm like, oh, these are on the same day, but they're not. So the car show, the Volkswagen car show is on the 7th, same thing. As far as I know, we haven't had any complaints, concerns, anything with these two events, so...
I'm a big hit, both of them are kind of a big hit.
They are a big hit. They are definitely a big hit.
Do we need a motion on these or just signing them?
Motion to sign.
Send that one down, David.
All right.
I'll do this one. Make a motion to accept the mass gathering permit for Zurbini Family Circus.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
There are free coupons on my counter for kids and free tickets.
There we go.
Okay.
With a paid adult.
Okay, there's yours, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the mass gathering permit for Vacation and Volkswagen Association for August 7th.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Discussion for them.
I'm sorry.
I'm used to this.
Yeah. Guess you're going to have to just live with the results on that one. Where's the signature here?
Top page.
Did you already sign, David?
Oh, I haven't. Hasn't come down this far.
Oh, okay. I thought you gave it to me.
Actually, you know what? I did give it to you. Well, you passed me the other one. It's on that one.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. That I think is done. All right, one down. Okay.
Today's the 8th. 6:22.
Okay, I think that takes care of everything. Personnel policy update.
So based on the hiring of your new treasurer, there is one change that we need to make. Your, the salary and the hours that you agreed upon with this individual, it puts it at a 35-hour-a-week position. Your previous treasurer was at 30 hours. So PTO time, Article 10 spells out, salary employees will accrue paid time off based on the amount of hours expected and agreed upon for their position. Treasurer previously said 30, so I've changed that to 35 so that she can accrue the proper amount of PTO. There have been no other changes to this document.
Motion?
You want the whole thing?
Yeah. I guess I'm just going to make a motion to the personnel policy for the accrued hours from 30 to 35.
I just, yeah, you make a motion to, yeah, I'm...
Accept it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Why are we doing this? Jen, you want to give us an update on the propane contract?
So Down East Energy reached out to us to find out, or not find out, they reached out to us to offer a commercial supply contract. We've used Down East for several years now. We have gone out to bid for them usually every three to five years, depending on the board's intent. They have presented a supply contract to you based on the 10,000 gallons roughly that you use between the transfer station, fire station, and town hall. We're on a automatic delivery. Last year you were paying $1.44. There is an increase to this. You know, normally in the past, we haven't announced what that increase is should the board decide that they want to go out to bid. You know, the most I can do is seeing it is give you the recommendation to make these decisions earlier in advance. I believe that you'll be pleased with this contract and wouldn't encourage you to this year, but if you decide to do it in the middle of the contract, to tell them in advance so that they're not sending you a contract with a number in it. Does that make sense? Because once we release this number...
Well, I mean...
They're not tied to it. They could, I mean, they could, sorry.
Excuse me?
Maybe an idea, we can look at it, not announce it, and we feel, if we feel that, you know, the number is fine, then we decide then. Or if we decide to put out the contract, we still don't have to announce it.
Right, so what I'm saying, Tom, is if we go out to bid, their number doesn't stand. They could increase it. This is their, they're offering you another yearly contract.
So they aren't bound by this offer if we go out to bid?
Correct. Absolutely not.
Not simply announcing what their proposal is.
Right.
That could be done.
No, I think what we want to do is not announce the number right now. We can take a look at it right now.
Okay.
And we see the number. We don't want to announce the number because we announced that number...
I mean, they could use it in their bid, but they could not. But at least it would give, it would give other companies an idea of where they stand.
But it's not fair to announce the number if a competitor knows that number.
I understand.
So we can look at it right now. If we feel that amongst ourselves at the moment, we look at the number, say, okay, we feel that's fair, we decide not to go out to bid, then we can announce the number.
Well, you can decide to...
Thank you.
So, second paragraph, it's got a dollar rate there. So you were at $1.44 for propane.
Okay. And this locks it for what period?
For all of '22, '23. So I believe it's April of '23.
So it's a fiscal year?
April of '23 is when we...
Till April of '23. Okay. This indented paragraph, I hear?
Yes.
Hmm.
I think I'd like to...
I'll tell you my thoughts.
I think we should stay away.
I think we ought to take that price.
I was going to say, maybe we should just deal with a motion at this stage. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll make a motions and see if it passes.
An emotion that would allow us to accept the submitted offer and not go out for bid.
Okay.
Fair enough. Someone want to make that motion?
I make a motion that we go with the price of Down East and not go out to bid.
I'll second that. Absolutely.
I really can't open it up. Well, I guess I could open up for discussion, but nobody here understands that. You will once we take this vote, but is there any discussion?
I think they probably could. They could, they could, you know, I mean, they can...
At this point, you guys have already made your mind up. I mean, you can tell...
They could come up and say, hey, you know...
If it's less than a certain amount or more than a certain amount, right, what would you, what would you go out to bid for? What, you know, what lower? How much of the increase do you think is...
Does anybody have any comment?
Anybody have any idea of the increase?
Okay.
Uninfluenced comment.
Hmm?
Uninfluenced comment.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I mean, when I said, you know, you can do it, because I could get up and say, hey, you know, you're going to be, you know, businesslike, you could put it out to bid. But we've had in the past, we've done that where we've actually done worse by putting it out to bid because it opens up a can of worms. When we have a good, something good handed in front of us, sometimes you're just going to make that call.
Well, and I think that the conversation too is around fuel, knowing what fuel has done.
Yeah.
You know, where do you think that a good number might be at?
I think you'll be happy with the results.
Yeah.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would you like to announce the price?
So the contract that they're signing is a firm fixed price of $1.96 per gallon for propane.
So the problem with that is...
We all sign up for that?
We've done it before where we put it back out because we thought we'd get a better deal in the prices, even from the person, the company that gave us originally, went up.
Right. So really the thing to do is, I mean, so next year, if you decide, you know, you know, before they send us anything, if you decide you want to go back out, you know...
I'm sorry?
How many you want on here?
Did you want to come to?
No.
No. And the quantity on this is like 10,000 gallons?
Yeah.
An estimated...
Estimated, but...
And it, but it says if you go over or under, they don't charge you anyways.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah, you don't have to.
Yeah. Okay. A little awkward, but I think it came out all right. Okay. Why don't we, I think Kim will be back in a moment. Why don't we hold on for a moment, okay? Why don't I handle the announcements? Fair enough. Announcements are Monday, June 27th, Road Committee at 6:00 PM. Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, June 29th, 6:00 PM. Select Board, I guess that's Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes.
One and the same?
They were changing.
Yeah. Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, July 6th at 6:00 PM. Planning Board, Thursday, July 7th at 6:00 PM. Forest and Conservation, Monday, July 11th at 6:00 PM. Select Board, Wednesday, July 13th, 6:00 PM. Select Board, Wednesday, July 20th, 6:00 PM. Planning Board, Thursday, July 21st, 6:00 PM. And Select Board, Wednesday, July 27th, 6:00 PM. Okay, so. Liquor license for the Acton Fair.
Yes, so this is a repeat from last year as well, and it's the same company, the same vendor, the same vendor and the same vendor that you just approved last week. This is Cheers to You. It is a mobile liquor establishment certified and licensed through the state, looking to do their same, I think it's a beer and wine tent for the weekend of the fair, 25th to the 28th. They've met all the requirements. I checked with all the appropriate agencies and just like last week, nobody had any concerns. They've paid the fees.
It's been a couple of years, right?
Been a couple of years.
I think so.
Yeah. Time flies.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the application for the license for Incorporated Civic Organization, which is a liquor license, Cheers to You Incorporated, who's...
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
They did make mention when they e-mail, that they were going to be extending a fence area, a bigger fenced-in area for the tent this year, so...
Okay. Okay. Next item has to do with liaisons.
So I've given you a list of where they stand now, and I've also added the APAT and the Cemetery. APAT, there, you know, we get, we get emails regarding the amount of time that videos are up currently. The board has a policy with the department head that it's three business days. A lot of times when that three business days doesn't hit, I forward you the emails that I receive. So I think that it's good to have a liaison in the middle to take it out of our office because we have nothing to do with that channel. And then Cemetery really is looking for some, you know, participation from the Select Board, if you will.
Okay.
So, in the past, and you certainly don't have to do it this way, but in the past, we've started with the senior-most member and just asked essentially if there's any committees that he or she hasn't had. So I think that's Kim. Kim is, right, you've got more years than David?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And today's Kim's birthday. We kind of forget not to...
Thank you.
I'm not sure if that's what he meant when he said, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't think so.
So happy birthday, Kim. And which, are there any of these committees that you have not had?
Well, we had talked about APAT I haven't done.
Okay, so that's a kind of new one, so is the gentleman good with her taking APAT?
Yeah, I think that's great.
And, you know, I, you know, I don't think I've done Cemetery.
Well, that's brand new, so you wouldn't have.
Oh, okay, that's why. I, you know, I did like, I, maybe it was combined, Conservation, maybe it was all together, so...
Just those two?
Other than that, yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking.
So David, do you have a first pick?
I like to do the roads this year if possible. We got a road project going on. I figured I can help out with that if they need me.
Tom, Kim, good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, Tom, your pick?
Warrant Finance.
Warrant Finance. I'm just going to go through them, assuming that one of you will speak up if you have a concern. All right, so Kim's already got two, so we're going to go back to David for a second pick? Because there's, and that's the only one I think that you haven't had.
Codes, code.
That's the only one you haven't had on this list?
I've never had.
Other than the new ones?
Yeah.
So it's land use department.
Land use.
All right. Tom gets the next pick?
I'd like the Fire Department.
Fire Department is Tom. All right, Kim, back to you.
How about the rec?
You want the rec?
Yeah. It's been a while since I've done that.
All right, Kim.
Boy, this is so easy.
Yes, all right. David? And we're going to scratch the Marijuana Committee, so that one's going to come off the list. We don't need to put a liaison on that unless something comes back up, we'll deal with them.
Conservation.
You want Conservation Forest? You just had that last year.
Yeah, I had it last year, but the problem was with COVID and everything. We didn't have any meetings.
They really didn't meet.
And we were just starting to get into it, so I kind of feel that I ought to continue on with that.
And they do have...
With you guys.
Tom, you good with that?
Oh, I'm fine with that, yes.
Tom?
Transfer Station.
Transfer Station. Tom? All right, so we got three, one, two, three, one, two, three, and we have three left. Look at that. Kim, you've got School, Capital Improvements, or Mary Grant? I'm going to help you with that because you had Capital Improvement, Mary Grant. How about the School?
Yeah. All right.
And then Tom's, so Capital Improvement and Mary Grant. Tom was on Capital Improvement, I think, right?
I was, I was on the committee for it, period.
On the committee. And Mary Grant, have you, David, have you had them?
Yeah.
You should slash them with like Cemetery because they don't have...
You'd rather do the Mary Grant?
Like Cemetery slash Mary Grant.
I'll do the capital improvement.
I'm just saying, because they don't have, you know, each one of them don't have a meeting every so many weeks or.
Mary Grant is pretty, pretty active, and the Cemetery would like to be. I'll share off Kim with the concerns with, yeah. And I think you may see some changes in the Cemetery Committee, so.
All right.
I'm sorry, Tom, you said capital improvement?
Yeah.
Okay. And David, that leaves you with Mary Grant.
Okay, so.
All right, let's make sure we got this right. So Kim has APAT, Cemetery, rec, and school, that's four. Tom has warrant finance, transfer station, capital improvement, and fire department, that's four. David's got Conservation Forest, road committee, Mary Grant, and land use. Did we get all the committees? Did we forget anybody? Because I hate to be the one to forget somebody. All right.
This doesn't require a vote?
This doesn't require a vote. But as we're talking about departments and committees, we are sending out, sent out a friendly reminder email that, you know, as this lasts a week, I mean, they shouldn't be purchasing anything unless they, for fiscal year 2022, unless they really need it or, you know. So we're trying to wrap the ears up. We'll draft a memo.
I was going to say you've done something out to them.
Yeah, we draft a memo to the department heads, yep, and let them know.
Okay, appointments.
Okay, so I've put together the appointments for the positions that I feel shouldn't lapse. I mean, if for some reason you didn't meet next week because something happened, you know, not to take away from any of the committees, but some of them could lapse if they needed to. We are still in the process of reaching out to everybody on these committees to make sure they want to be reappointed, so that's taking a little more time than we had anticipated. But appointments that we're looking for are, Kelly Burgess is treasurer, and these are all one-year appointments. Jason Siviny is a code enforcement officer, emergency 911 officer, and local plumbing inspector, that's all one. James Driscoll is the animal control officer. Robert Anderson is your constable. Richard Smith as your EMA director. His fire chief appointment doesn't expire until November, if you're wondering. Victoria Erickson as our health officer. And those are the pertinent ones, if you will. All your committee ones will be next week once we have some answers.
Okay.
Do we have to do these all individually?
No, you can just make a motion to approve them as, as read. I mean, they're all one-year terms.
Okay, so let's make a motion to approve, let's see here, to the selectman's office of the municipality of Acton, Maine, all the names that were read. Do I need to read everything else?
You really don't need to. I mean, it's clear for the record in the minutes, so that's up to you.
So I guess we need a motion.
For one-year appointments?
One-year appointments.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Motion passed.
And just as I recall, I mean, we've got a standing.
Got to approve these that write.
We have a standing notice that, you know, we have committees open. I mean, it was your intention, I mean, I guess I need you to think about, I'll send you a list of who's coming due. If you have any concerns with anybody on any committees, I mean, we're asking everyone that's coming due because I haven't heard otherwise.
When are those, when are those up? Is it July 1st?
June 30th, so.
Wow, yeah, okay.
We do still desperately need two planning board alternate members. We haven't been able to fill that.
For those that are current members, do they have to indicate that they want to be reappointed or how does that work?
We normally, we reach out to them and ask them out of courtesy. We don't just reappoint them.
No.
Yeah, so normally, yeah.
But there needs to be some action.
Yeah, they would need to tell me that they want to be reappointed. So we're in the process of making calls and sending emails.
Okay. All right, so.
Assuming that I don't hear from the board over the next couple of days, I'll assume that everybody that's on these committees, you're fine with just being, if, assuming they want to be, the reappointments will be created for next week.
Okay, so you'll be sending us something on this?
I'm assuming you know everybody on the committee, so I wasn't going to, but I can, I definitely can. I'll give you a call tomorrow, Tom.
Okay.
And we'll go over who's coming due.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. I still have a couple of rec members I need to reach out to and haven't looked at capital improvements. I don't think they were more than one-year terms or no? They were one-year? Yeah, so I still have some work to do.
Okay. Okay, town meeting follow-ups. The RFP for the roof, I assume this is for the shed?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just took note of a few of the things that came up at town meeting, thought that we would just resolve them, as you indicated to the voters we would. Adam is here, and he and I have had a conversation about the San Sal舍 shed roof, and we're going to talk about putting an RFP together and get some input from you guys.
That's the San Sal舍 shed roof.
I'm sorry.
It's the old garage.
The old garage.
The new shed's going to roll.
That's a brand-new shed, you're right.
Yeah, no, that one's in good shape.
It's why Adam's in charge and not me.
Incorrect.
Go ahead, so tell us about, exactly which building is it?
So it's the old Two-Bay Garage out back. It's the one that's got the bulldozer sitting in it, the old town dozer.
All right, and.
I reached out to Patco, had met with the gentleman, and I've made a few phone calls and no return.
Okay.
So the shed is 40 feet wide, 30 feet deep. It needs a new roof, and when they take the roof off, all the insulation is no good underneath it, so they're going to have to do insulation also.
So we're going to, the bid's going to say to replace the existing?
Metal roof.
Metal roof.
And insulation.
And insulation. Anything else? I go to David because you would know that, I mean, anything else on the built, on the roof that we need to say?
What about rotten wood?
Well, just the roof there, I mean.
Because it's all the major steel structure, so there's no wood involved in the building.
The only problem with the roof is where they put the screws down in it, rotted around the screws. And so I think Joe had had somebody go down and look at it.
Yep.
And no roofer will touch it.
It's going to be a commercial company.
Well, what if, I mean, we had the company that did the couple of roofs here, was it Hall Brothers that did, it was in a hall out of Berwick that did the gym roof?
Yeah.
So they might be interested in it. They're a commercial.
They may.
You know, I think the siding guy is, is a roof company.
Just saying.
Just putting it out there. If he's here.
We'll ask him.
Ask him.
But we're still going out to bid, right?
He's a commercial, no, I understand, he's a commercial roofer, so.
All right. So what kind of, what kind of timeframe? I mean, we'll.
As soon as anybody can do it, I mean, it's just.
So how about we ask them in their bid to, you know, and it's something we can do for the parking lot, too. Instead of saying we want it done by such-and-such date, have them put that in the bid when they can complete it, and you can use that information in making your decision.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a storage shed. I mean, all it's doing is keeping the sun off the dozer, and there's a couple of old signs down there, there's not much down there.
Right, but.
Yeah, but the reason why, the reason why there's not power in there is because.
It is, right.
They were worried about, the leak was leaking right now where the power panel was going to be.
Yeah, it's on the corners mainly, it comes down on the corners, you can see the rain come in when it does rain.
Is this a wood structure?
No, it's a steel building.
That's why.
Steel, I mean, red steel.
That's why you're going to have a hard time, certain companies will do it.
Yeah, it doesn't have a wooden roof or anything, it's just complete steel panel screwed down to the main beams that are in there.
So we're going to write up an RFP for that, or are we going to have?
Have we got a budget on this?
Write that up. Yeah, we got a budget on this.
We do.
Yeah, that, yeah.
We've had money for a couple of years, I guess.
We've asked.
It's my understanding.
Adam and I are going to do it together. I'm going to type it, and he's going to look at it and proof it and tell me what he wants to change.
Good.
I'll ask the question, given that it's not really being used, does it need to be repaired?
Yeah.
We don't want to lose it.
We don't want to lose the building.
Would that be the outcome?
Yes. I mean, it's got some of our road stuff in it, but not much. I mean, it's got a few things that we store down there.
Once it's fixed, then can you use it?
It's a decent building. It's a good building.
What's the budget on this?
I feel like it was $10,000, but I could be, I mean, does that sound right, Dennis?
It's close on that.
I feel like it was, no?
I don't feel like it's, yeah, it's not that much.
Yeah, I feel like it was right around there.
We'll just have to look and do it. I don't want to throw in a number, that's all.
You sure this thing's got to be fixed?
Yeah, 11 or 12, yes.
You sure this thing's got to be fixed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It'd be nice to be able to keep our loaders in there in the winter, just to keep them out of the salt shed, because they sit right in the salt.
I'm out of my depth here.
All right, so we'll work on that, too.
Okay, that'd be great. I do have another question. The dozer's down there. Is it going to be all right if I just start draining all the oil out of it? Because it's starting to leak out the door now. I haven't been in that shed in a month, and now it's starting to creep its way out the door.
I mean.
It's leaking bad. It was fine all winter, but with the warm weather, I think the seals have just softened up, and she's starting to pour out.
Yep. I mean, at this point, we can't have it leaking oil, so you chained up the wings, and the wings, wings are all chained up, right?
Yeah, everything's all chained up, yes.
I would say, obviously, if you're going to drain them out, just make sure you make it so nobody, well, nobody can start it anyways.
No, no, I don't, there's only a few people not to start that thing.
No, not too many people.
And I'll put a tag on it, just to do something.
Just a lockout tag or something, just for case of giggles. But, yeah, I mean, if it's leaking that bad.
Yeah, it's gotten real bad.
We had to add hydraulic fluid to it so it can move. Because where it was, it was fine.
Right.
Plus, someone complained about it, so then we brought it down, and now it's paying the ass.
So do we use it?
No.
No, we wanted to, not we, I mean, Ed had suggested maybe having it set up, get a building well, or whatever. Cover for it at the fairgrounds. It's a piece of history from the town of, it's old.
It's really down all the time.
1946, I think.
Yeah, so it'd be nice to have it somewhere.
To plot the roads back in the day.
Yeah, I think my father was the last one to use it. My father had an agreement with the town to store it, but, you know, people thought it was a really good idea to just mess with that, so now it's down there plugging up his garage, so.
So, okay.
So you're going to pull the oil?
Maybe we can reach out to Ed.
I'll get the oil out of it, and, you know, I'll just make, I'll put a tag on it.
The motor's not leaking, it's just the hydraulic.
I think it's all the hydraulics. It looks like hydraulic fluid.
Don't.
When I saw it today, no, I'm not going to touch the motor. I think it's just the hydraulics.
Yeah, it's just the hydraulics.
Yeah, because it looks like just straight hydraulic fluid on it.
It can't be a whole lot, because we put it in and we didn't charge or nothing, we just grabbed some hydraulic fluid in it just so we could.
There might not be much left in it.
Probably not, but.
So I'll get some more speedy dry, get it cleaned up, and then whatever's left, I'll get out. What's that?
I was wondering if there was more than a gallon spilled.
I don't think so. I don't think so about that.
You wouldn't have to get the EPA involved.
Nope, no.
It's inside anyways.
Yeah, no, it's staying contained in the building and on the concrete floor. So there's a lot of speedy dry around it, a lot of it soaked up, but I just noticed more today than usual, so I just want to address it before it gets worse.
Good, Karen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, road articles?
So the concern was brought up regarding how the warrant articles were written as far as the rollover. So I sent Maine Municipal an email, and I can, I can read it to you, that asked them exactly that. I cut and pasted both of the, I said, so, hello, we had a town meeting this past Saturday, and below please find two articles that pass as written. A member of the public stated that he had spoken to MMA or researched with MMA and didn't think that it was legal for us to spend the money it's carried forward based on how these articles are written. These articles have been past practice, and no change has been made to them. Unfortunately, our treasurer of 18 years also just went to another town, so I don't have an outlet to turn to for a clearer explanation, please advise. And I sent Article 21 and Article 36 to them. Michael Livingstone of Maine Municipal Legal contacted me, called me, and said that the articles were written perfectly fine. It does carry over and allow you to appropriate and spend that money from leftover year. The only thing that he mentioned, which had nothing to do with the concern at town meeting, was that on the second article, no, I'm sorry, on the first article that said, on the second portion that says, let me see, all other expenditures, okay, no, wait a minute, no, not that one. Okay, the second half of the first article that says, and to carry forward but not to appropriate the following fund balances, the ambulance, capital improvements, dams, fire. He said it's not necessary to have that on there because if they were properly created reserve accounts, they automatically do that anyways. He said it's, it's fine for transparency if you want to, but you don't have to ask the voters for that portion. Nothing to do with the road article, but he did point that out in our conversation.
So, so what's unnecessary in there?
That, just the fact that you list them and you ask the voters to, to carry forward the balances. Because he says that if as reserve accounts, if they were set up as proper reserve accounts back in their day, ambulance, reserve fund, capital improvement, they automatically carry forward.
And they can't be spent unless appropriated?
Right, so you don't have to ask them to carry it forward because that happens anyways. But the wording in the first one was that, see if the town will vote to carry forward the following balance and to appropriate it. So that allows you to carry for, spend any paving money even though you're not asking for it again.
I'm confused, because at town meeting, the individual said that he talked to MMA, and now all of a sudden MMA's saying it's fine, right?
That's what Mr. Livingstone.
Because that's the same article that we do every year.
That's what Mr. Livingstone told me.
Dennis?
I never said I talked to MMA. I said I did my research through MMA. There's a difference.
Okay.
And in that research, and I can bring it to you next week, that MMA puts out, that you can carry over these, I agree 100%, but you can't spend, if there was a dollar amount with that warranted article, that's fine, you can spend it. But there was no dollar amount, and the only money you can spend is a dollar amount that's voted at town meeting, unless you have a warrant article like you have, when you, for the grants and different things like that, that authorize the board of selectmen to spend any funds that you receive under that warrant article.
Okay, I, well, you raised the issue.
Yep.
We've taken the issue to council. Council has reviewed the warrant and indicated that, in fact, they can be spent.
Yep.
So.
I'll forward.
Any further concerns?
I will forward the thing from the paperwork that Maine Municipal puts out regarding this, and I'll give you the, I'll give you the page number.
Thank you.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Are you going to put this article forward for how many years? It's been probably at least nine, because I remember putting it, back in the day, Scott and I kind of pushed to have that article put through because we kept losing so much money every year due to not.
I think the key word in there was that they could appro, that carried forward to be appropriated. I understand that it's not saying the amount, but what he's saying is that it's a carry forward appropriated.
It's a given amount, because until you, until July 1st, there isn't an amount.
Let's just take a look at what you got.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and we'll close this down one way or the other, okay? Very good, thank you. Any, any other comments on this? All right. Milton Mill's stop sign.
It's actually a speed limit sign.
Speed limit.
But yes, and that was kind of before town meeting, but I wanted to remember.
This was the conversation you and I had with someone?
You and I had.
Yes.
So I spoke to DOT in North Berwick.
Yeah.
And Adam went out, and the first thing we had to do is determine if there was a sign there and really what was going on with it. So between Adam and I today, we figured out that there is a sign missing. Apparently, it's chopped off halfway at the post. DOT in North Berwick will be replacing that sign.
Okay.
We have, I'm sorry?
From North Berwick?
That, they have a, what do they call that, Will? They have a, DOT has an office in North Berwick?
Yeah.
A maintenance center or something.
So what happens is, Ray, is North Berwick office will take care of it during the summertime, is am I right? And then Alfred will take, the Alfred branch will take care of it in the wintertime.
We've made connections with the North Berwick office, so that's just to my call, because they answer my calls.
There we go. The, anything further on that? No. AWS agreement.
Animal Welfare Society. So each year we go into contract with them, we have reviewed the contract. There's actually two of them, because they'd like you to sign two copies, so they'll return one. Uh, the, we've compared the contract, there is an increase, the per capita fee for this year's agreement has increased by five percent from a dollar thirty-nine to a dollar forty-six, and this is, uh, the first increase since two thousand and fifteen, and it's based on the demogra, uh, the demographics of the town. So, they take the number of, um, of residents in the town and multiply times that rate, so that's your contract if you are. So, when you sign it, um, we are required to have some contract with somebody for, for dogs, for animals.
What's the contract for?
Animal welfare, it's the Kenny Bunk Shelter, so the animal welfare has somewhere to take them.
So that we bring animals there?
Correct.
I see. And, and the fee was just a per capita fee?
Right, a dollar forty-six.
And so, there's no fee when we bring animals here?
No.
It's a cap.
The person that, um, who's picking up their animal actually pays a, a fee that comes back to the town.
I see, okay. And so, what's the total of the fee? Is it?
It should be in there.
Three thousand eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All righty. Well, then, I guess, go ahead. You wanna make a motion? There, we'll send one down to you. We got one here, we have to sign both of them.
Okay, where's the amount here?
That's what I was looking for.
Make a motion, we go on the agreement with AWS, Animal Welfare Society, for the amount of thirty-eight hundred and one dollar and eighty-four cents.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Um, other business, uh, Adam? I, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the, uh, or the Hopper Bridge, that bridge down there? The, the, the trees have come up, and you really can't see people coming around the corner?
They're not heading down there next week.
Okay.
It's on my radar to get down. I was just trying to finish up a couple little projects I had going on, and then I was gonna get down there next week.
Is there signage down there?
Technically, we don't own, I think if I'm right, we don't own the property next to the bridge, the state owns it.
State of New Hampshire does.
State, state does.
Can we maintain it, though, or do we have to?
Yeah, and I did last year, I cut down a bunch of stuff.
It's not a lot, it's just the thin, you know, saplings in there.
Yep, I wanna get near the bridge, get the saplings, we cut a bunch down last year.
Okay.
Keep up with it. So, I was on my radar for the beginning of next week.
So, uh, and some signs, uh, weight limits there?
I got signs being made right now.
Is that gonna be at the front of the road, or?
It's gonna be on sand page, both sides, and, and on Milton's side, I spoke with Milton about doing it.
Stop sign down the main lane, did you take care of that?
David, do that one?
Not yet, cuz we're gonna ditch down there, so I'm gonna, when we go down ditching, we're gonna.
Might wanna get a temporary up there then.
Could fall down.
Yeah, it was twisted right around.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna try and do it, we were planning on ditching down there earlier, but it just was so muddy, I just stayed away from it, so.
Thank you.
I'll take care of that. Thank you.
Um, public comment? We gotta sign that one. Okay, thank you.
On the Ballfield parking lot, I believe that when we were discussing the siding bid, I had made the suggestion of putting into the contractor's, uh, bid, a time limit, and it was, said to me that typically you don't wanna do that, because then the contractor could add an added cost to.
Oh, complete buy.
To the complete, completion of that whole situation. Now, seeing on the parking lot, and I seen that you guys are kind of putting a time limit on that, to be completed by, isn't that something that, either, I mean, you can't have both?
I think what I was trying to say was that maybe ask the, ask the bidder to put when they could get to the work in as part of their bid, so.
I thought it was a completion type of situation.
Well, two different things were said, and they didn't really, you know, give a whole lot of direction, I, I think that they can take that into consideration, if they so choose, they don't have to, but, I mean, we did change the siding one, you know, from late fall, we didn't think we got any bids because people didn't think they could get it done, so we took that out. Um, it's just, if, if you ask them to put it in as to when they could possibly get to it, that might help the board, you know, weigh their options, it doesn't mean they have to, it's not a completed by date.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna, the only reason you'd wanna put down a starting date is because like myself, okay, people call right now to my house, they want me to go do a job for them, I tell them, unless you can wait till October, I can't do it. Okay, so, if we have people put in a bid for something like that, and they can't get to the job until October, then we, and we have where we can go to somebody who can, and we're within our price range, then we'd be better off doing that. Um, I would, cuz you obviously can't do it in the wintertime, well, you could do it in the wintertime, but it's not preferred, but I think what it would do is, um, give us a better idea of where we'd be standing. Now, completion date, um, I think we'd have to, we'd have to see the price, then, you know, talk to the contractor.
I think the projects that, that are, have a little different element to them as well. The parking lot, um, we want done to make sure we can service the athletic events that are taking place down there. There's a period of time between, I assume, baseball and soccer, where there's a window to get it done, so we need to have it done during that period, and I believe that was the rationale for.
By the first of September is what we were.
You know, specifying a timeframe. As opposed to the, the siding, you know, uh, from my perspective, it's. How long has it been like that?
Years.
Yeah, so, you know, we wanna get it done this year, but, um, we, I, I was in the impression it was contractors were very busy and difficult to get, so we, you know, we were having trouble getting bids, and we wanted to make sure that a timeframe we put on it didn't preclude someone from bidding. In my perception.
So, just being practical about it.
In my perception as a taxpayer, I'm, I'm just looking at it, you can pick and choose of which way you're gonna go.
Yeah.
And you can't, either you have it one way or another.
Nah, nah, I think you can pick and choose.
Really?
Yeah, sure.
And we do, cuz at the same, at the same time, you don't have to take a little bid either, you know, it's, you know, we, we gotta look at the bids, um, obviously, we wanna stay within that number, cuz we only have a certain number to spend, but we do have the right to, uh, reject bids, uh, we don't have to take a little bid, and if a timing factor and cost and all that come into play, we have to look at all that. Um, we'll just see how many bids we get in the timeframe, and we'll see how that works out, but, um, you know, we haven't put a timeline on it yet.
For instance, if there was an event taking place in the back of the building here, um, then I, I, I would consider putting a timeframe on it, cuz we'd wanna make sure that that was cited so that we didn't have an eyesore for the event. Um, I think it depends on the facts and circumstances of each contract, and for me, it makes perfect sense, so.
Hmm, all right.
With this one, though, uh, all right, we're talking about the, the parking lot, I mean, we do want it done by September first.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, we get, you know, we want it started now, we want it done by then, so, I mean, either way we go.
So, it's basically a selectman's choice, cuz the taxpayers would like to have the building cited years ago.
We haven't been able to find anybody.
That's just as an, as an example that I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, you represent the taxpayers, but it's your choice of when you're gonna put a time limit on it or not.
Yeah.
And that's not fair.
Well, we, we did, we did put a time limit on the siding thing.
Yeah, we did.
Then we got one siding bid, and obviously.
And it wasn't within the numbers.
What's that?
And it wasn't within our budget.
It was way beyond our budget, so we decided to take that out to see if we can entice, because, you know, as you know, Ray, uh, most people in the trades right now, if you're not busy, you're no good, and so, it's, it's awful hard to find anybody to do anything right now, so, um, if you put, and I am worried about putting a time limit on it, I really am, because when you do.
On, on the parking lot?
Yeah, because what you'll do is, you may discourage, but at the same time, we do have a September first that we.
Right.
So, I mean, um, by putting it in, obviously, if you put in a time limit saying, uh, we like to have this project completed by September first, okay? Um, anybody that's already booked up won't bid on it anyways.
We can say, you know, first, you know, first consideration will be given, you know, based on sports season, first consideration will be given to bidders, you know.
That are able to.
That are able to do it by this date, but when can you? You know, we can make a generic form and give them the option to put the dates in.
I wouldn't even put that in there, because that, that's our decision, if they say they can't do it before the September first.
Right.
And somebody else can, then, um.
If you only get one bid.
Okay, but.
And they say, "I can't get till it to October."
Then we change it up.
Well, you know, we're gonna have to consider when our options are.
So, I guess my, my second question would be, i- if you get a bid and they say, "Yes, we can complete it by this date," and then it, that doesn't happen, then what, what's the repercussion for that?
Well, unfortunately, there isn't a whole lot of repercussions, I mean, we're not gonna pay them.
There are no.
So.
If, if you put in the contract a penalty, you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
The town's gonna pay for that, and so, we gotta judge, if that becomes a reality, that we find that they can't get it done by that date, then we're gonna have to have a decision, do we wanna go back out to bid? Cuz it, I, I don't know, well, if we only get one bid or two bids, then we may not do that. That, I think it, it depends on the facts and circumstances of the project.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna get bonded.
That, I think, is within our, our prerogative, I don't, I don't see this as inconsistent or violation of policy. I don't.
Well, no, cuz we tried it once, it didn't work, so we're trying it this time because there was actual, you know, uh.
So, when you do things on a consistent basis, isn't that establishing a precedent?
Look, consistency is a wonderful thing, but I would not fall on my sword over it. If there's a good business reason to not be consistent, then don't be consistent. And, we're trying to get the town's business done, and I would not let that kind of inconsistency bother me, I just wouldn't.
So, you would feel the same way as far as, um, this is an example, you give a time limit to the Wharton Finance to have the budgets and all that done by this time, and it doesn't get done by that time?
Those are two totally different.
How is it different?
No, Ray, you can't apply consistency between different issues and try to, that, the reason there's a timeframe there is, you gotta develop a budget, and you gotta have it ready to bring to the town, so people can vote on it. If you don't have a schedule, you're never gonna get the budget done, and, and we're gonna be in a position where we can't bring it forward to the townspeople, we will have failed our responsibility to assemble a budget and present it to the, to the, to the townspeople. So, this, I, I was an accountant, accountant's the law of consistency, but I, I gotta tell you, that it, it only takes you so far. Um, the business of the town's gotta be done, and I think you have to make good judgments in doing that, and if, and if you're a little inconsistent, to me, they're totally different issues, and it's, it's a non-issue. My opinion.
So, I, I, a refresher here, I just wanna make sure, let's see if we're on the same page here, cuz I think we've done this part. We, we've done a time limit on the side, and then it worked, we're gonna try it on this, see if it works.
Yeah.
And we'll just go from there.
Right.
Okay.
Kind of beating a dead horse.
Yeah.
I think what I would prefer, if it was okay, would be to put, when can you start versus when can you fit, like, can you have it done by? Just because theoretically, I'd love to have the parking lot finished by soccer.
That's what we decided on, wasn't it? That is what we decided on, right?
I think it keeps going back and forth.
Well, I, yeah, right, but I mean, what we.
What we did is, when, you said what, when soccer start?
September first.
Starts in September, and while I'd love to have the parking lot done for September, at the same time, we've been doing it with just using the other one, so that one is on the other side, so theoretically, you should never have to worry about it coming in collision with any kids if they start during the soccer.
You know, well, we could. Let's assume they start in September, and you've got sporting events, and they've got equipment in there, the road, the parking lot is not accessible, where are people gonna park?
The other park, the regular parking lot.
And this is a far back, when it's a different law.
So, when you're looking at the field, there's the main parking lot where the concession stand is and all, and the basketball hoops and that, and then on the, then there's the field, and then on the other side is where the new parking lot is.
Mm-hmm.
So, that new parking lot, there's still the whole fence that goes around the field.
Yeah.
So, even though the equipment might be there, it might be distracting, it might be obnoxious, we can still do what we wanna do on the field because the kids are still in a fenced area.
Okay.
So, they're not going to be by the equipment, they'll be in the fence.
You know, I think she's got a point. Put it out to bid, see what comes in, right? We see the bids, at the end of the day, we look at it, we call the contractor that wants to do it, say, "Can you, when do you think you can have this done?" If they say ain't gonna be done till December.
That's what I thought I decided on was.
Well, and that, right, and that's what I've said like three times now.
Just, just see who, and they can start.
I thought I agreed with you.
Not the case.
It just sounds like it kept going back and forth.
I know, I know.
Just, for both four years, so.
Okay, so, I got it.
Got it.
Care of it.
To answer your question, Tom, uh, where do people park without that other parking lot? Uh, when there's too many cars, they park out of 109.
That's what I was afraid.
And the fire chief has, for several years now, uh, spoke to the rec about this issue, it's a serious safety issue.
That's what I was understood, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is really a problem. Uh, and when it comes to the RFP for the parking lot, uh, the town has a, uh, inordinance on the construction of a parking lot, what the, uh, specs are for building a parking lot, uh, so that would be very easy to, uh, put out.
In terms of assembling the bid?
Yes, what the requirements are for the parking lot, uh, you just have to follow what's in the ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I wanna thank the board for allowing the public to have opportunities to speak on issues rather than having to wait for public comment, I think it's much more helpful to do that. Um, I just wanna comment quickly on the, I commend the board for its decision on the parking lot and putting it out to bid despite the difficulty in that, the awkwardness in that, um, I do think it's what's best for the town and what's appropriate, for several reasons. Um, I have absolutely nothing but praise for both of our current road commissioners, but, you know, I could've run for road commissioner and potentially won, and I have no experience, it's, it's an elected office.
Yeah.
So, what if you had a road commissioner that the quality of work wasn't there, but they're elected, it's in their district? That doesn't work.
Yeah.
That's not good. What if all of the prime jobs are in one district? Is that fair to the other road commissioner?
Yeah.
What if we needed this done by a date certain, and Will can't do it, because he's got, he's redoing the H Road or whatever, there's so many reasons why I think your decision was the right one, and I also think it's totally right that Will, if he did prep work and estimates and so forth, he absolutely should build the town.
Absolutely.
So, again, thank you.
Um, the last thing is, like, two weeks ago, I live on East Shore Drive, there was a major removal of trees, I'm talking about two to three truckloads of trees. Um, now, I don't know the status of it, it's really the aside to my story, but it's, it's, it was a lot that was sitting there with two, uh, buildings on it that were in total disrepair, one has been demolished and removed, um, so, I was concerned about all these trees I saw leaving, and so, before I filled out any paperwork, I went to the code enforcement office, and to the best of my knowledge, to the best of Ashley's knowledge, there were no permits. Um, the stumps have been removed, so there's no way of saying what was there for trees. Okay, that's, to me, that's very concerning, but that's really not the reason I want to get up tonight. The reason I got up to speak is, the mechanism for me to bring this to the code enforcement officer's attention is called, the form says citizens' complaint. It feels awkward to me, it, I'm not complaining, it's a citizens', it's an inquiry, I'm not saying anyone did anything wrong, maybe they have, maybe they haven't, these people, whoever they are, will be my neighbors at some point, um, and so, I just think, I know it, maybe it seems like semantics, but I think maybe the form could at least have some options,